Elementary age students back into the classroom.
And the remnants of Sally now hammering the triad with rain. We're going to check on the weather in just a moment, but first we begin with breaking news in schools. Governor Roy Cooper just announced that kindergarten through 5th grade students can go back to school full time starting on October 5th. This will mean they're following Plan A that the governor announced over the summer. Under this plan, kids would be in regular sized classrooms five days a week, wearing masks, social distancing, and going through symptom screenings. Governor Cooper says this decision is based on data.
We're able to open this option because most North Carolinians have doubled down on our safety and prevention measures and stabilized our numbers. The science of lower viral spread among younger children also backs up this decision.
Governor Cooper says he knows this plan will not work for every family and adds that school districts will need to be flexible to accommodate remote learning options. We're going to dig into the decision throughout the 4 to 5, but for now, let's check in with Chief Meteorologist Tim Buckley about all of this rain.
Oh yeah, Maddie, lots and lots of rain still falling across the area. I wanted to start by showing you downtown Greensboro. You can see the rain kind of coating everything. It's been raining since this morning, but all things considered, it has still been about best case scenario so far for us to avoid major flooding. I'll show you why. Even though we are coated in this rain, the majority of it has been largely light to moderate with occasional downpours. This is a steady rain that continues across the triad, but there are lighter pockets like in Guilford right now, heavier pockets like in High Point down to Lexington. This is going to continue through about 7, 8, 9 o'clock tonight. What has changed since yesterday, the storm is moving much more quickly, and the faster it goes, the less time it will rain, which should limit our totals a little bit. Also what happened today, you see this very, very heavy band of torrential downpours in South Carolina. This has been really bad for them, but it's robbed some of the moisture from coming our way, so that is good for us, bad for South Carolina. They've had a lot of problems with flooding and several tornadoes down there, too. The severe weather risk is not really a factor any longer for most of our area. The tornado threat does continue for southeast North Carolina. Rain totals so far today ranging from about two inches in some areas, one to two inches elsewhere. That's so far. We could still pick up an additional one to two inches through about 9, 10 o'clock. Then after midnight, things are really dying down, just kind of lingering showers or drizzle. We'll have some wind gusts around 25 to 35 miles per hour tonight. I do want you to still be watching for flooding on those roadways, especially if you have to be out and about tonight. The weather will be quickly improving for tomorrow. We'll get some sun back for the afternoon, and the weekend is looking crisp and cool.
Tim, thank you. The WFMY team is keeping a close eye on the weather tonight. WFMY News 2's Grace Holland is live in Greensboro with how triad city officials are preparing for the rain and flooding threat.
Well, right now, I'm standing in this steady rainfall that we're seeing, and back here behind me is an area that Greensboro drivers, you're probably familiar with having some issues when there is heavy rain. Windover in Cridland right here, and if you look over my shoulder here where that car pulled up, there is a road closed sign. That's so that they can put that out quickly if this area does start to have any kind of flooding issues. But if you look right back here, traffic is moving just fine right now. The road looks normal, just wet, you know, happens when it rains. And again, the rain has been steady. Like Tim said, we've been kind of on this best case scenario. It's been looking lighter than initially thought, and that's exactly what city officials in High Point, Greensboro, Winston-Salem said that they are hoping continues throughout the day. Of course, they have been preparing for the heavier end of the rain for several days, making sure those storm drains are all cleared and ready to go. Today, they've spent a lot of time monitoring areas of trouble. Of course, right here, like I said, this intersection, Latham Park as a whole, can have some of those flooding issues, so they have been driving by, just making sure everything looks okay throughout the day, which of course, it does as of now. And one good thing about this as well, if you've noticed, there hasn't been a lot of wind, and the wind concern is pretty low across the triad. The hope is that that will mean there won't be any power outages. Duke Energy said they're monitoring it, but they're not expecting any outages. And I'll have more information about these preparations from the different cities here in the triad coming up at 5 and 6.
All right, Grace, thank you. Remember, you can stay up to date with the latest weather conditions at all times. Just check out wfmynews2.com or download our free News 2 app.
Let's get back to the big school announcement Governor Cooper made just about an hour ago. There is still a lot local school leaders will have to figure out, and Guilford County Schools is already in the process of trying to figure out their next step forward. So next week, the Guilford County School Board of Education is expected to vote on its own Plan B, a mix of in-person and online learning. Superintendent Dr. Sharon Contreras proposed bringing younger students back first and then eventually high schoolers in January. It's not clear how Governor Cooper's announcement that elementary school students can return to the classroom full time will impact what GCS does, but we do know the school board will meet on September 24th to discuss moving forward. A vote on Plan B was scheduled to happen, so we'll keep you updated with what comes next. In the meantime, Winston-Salem Forsyth County school leaders are set to meet this evening at 5 o'clock in less than an hour. We're told they will also discuss what comes next when it comes to bringing students back into the classroom. We'll be sure to keep you updated.
And in case you missed it, we talked with Guilford County Schools leaders for 30 minutes last night about the reopening process, even just to a Plan B mix of learning. It's a complicated plan, and there are still some things to figure out. You can watch the entire question and answer session with those district leaders and hear what they had to say. Just head to WFMY News 2's YouTube page. And a reminder, GCS is hoping to help parents make remote learning a success. Today, they opened 10 additional learning centers. That means the district is now running 23 of these sites. Students who use the centers should bring their own devices, but they will be given breakfast and lunch. The sites are open from 9 until 1 each day, and you do need to register ahead of time.
Now, let's get to your 4 to 5 roundup. A mother and her two-year-old son from High Point are missing. Police say Carolina Lopez Hernandez and Diego Brunson were seen for the last time 13 days ago on September 14th. They have not been in touch with any family or friends. Police say they are possibly in danger. Hernandez may be driving a red four-door 1999 Chevrolet Cavalier with a license plate number of HJJ8184. Call police if you know anything about where they may be. The family of private Carlton Elche, who died after a training exercise at Fort Hood, says they believe foul play was involved in his death. Che collapsed during the exercise and died two days later. His family says he messaged his fiance shortly before his death to say something was wrong. Che's cousin said in an interview that he was being targeted and did not want to go to training because he felt that something was going to happen. Fort Hood officials deny that foul play was a factor and say Che showed no signs of struggling before he collapsed near the end of a run. More than 163,000 businesses listed on Yelp have closed since March. This is according to an online review company. The findings illustrated the ongoing economic pain inflicted by COVID-19 that has killed 196,000 Americans and triggered a historic wave of layoffs. In a new report, Yelp says those businesses closed between March 1st and August 31st, and 60% of them have closed permanently. Temporary and permanent business closures listed on the site have increased 23% since July. And back here in the triad, we know the college football season looks a lot different without fans, but fans loved watching the Wake Forest game so much at the Fair Ground Drive-In, they're bringing it back. But you do need to register before 5 o'clock tonight. This Saturday, you can watch the Deacs take on the Wolf Pack at 8:00 PM, and then next Saturday, watch them play Notre Dame in the Dukes-Mayo Classic at noon. Only 200 cars are allowed on the fairgrounds to watch the game. Concessions are available, and food trucks will be on site.
Still ahead, triad experts sounding off about the return to the classroom, what we're learning as students slowly begin to meet face to face. Stay with us, the 4 to 5 will be right back, and we'll see you on our live streams. Welcome back to your 4 to 5. Governor Cooper's announcement today put the focus back on students returning to the classroom. Now that some students could go back sooner than we may have first thought, health experts are sounding off. Dr. Christopher Oul says we've learned a lot about keeping kids safe from schools that started this year with in-person learning.
I think that gives a little bit of encouragement for what public schools, if they decide to bring their students back for in-person learning here in the near future, with some of these measures that we've learned and seen in our private schools that seem to be working.
Dr. Oul says when cases are reported at schools, most of the time, the transmission is not actually happening in the building. It's happening because someone picks it up somewhere else. Dr. Oul says this is in line with studies on the virus that show it's being transmitted between family and friends who live together.
The highest risk for COVID transmission is in a household itself, much more so than a workplace, much more so than casual contact on the outside.
Eventually, you may be able to get a COVID-19 test at home. It's one of the ways developers are looking to make more testing available as we continue reopening. So how would these home tests work? Let's connect the dots.
A computer company and a biotech company have announced the creation of a rapid-at-home COVID-19 test. Think of it like a home pregnancy test, just without the plus and minus symbols. The companies say the test can detect coronavirus in 90% of cases compared to the nearly 100% accuracy you get with a PCR test, the one where the nasal swab is stuck all the way up your nasal cavity. So how does it work? According to the makers, you use a nasal swab on both nostrils, then put the swab in a small vial of solution provided. Four droplets from the tube are placed on a rapid test base, and then lines will form depending on how much of the virus is found. You use an app to scan the lines, and it tells you the results all within 15 minutes. This test is not on the market yet and still needs to be evaluated by the FDA to see if all these claims hold up. And according to reports, there is still no word on what it would cost, but cheap, effective at-home tests could be an important weapon to stop the spread of COVID-19.
Still ahead on your 4 to 5, it comes up every year, just like clockwork, should we get rid of daylight saving time? But now lawmakers say the COVID-19 pandemic gives us a real reason to stay in the same time all year long. We'll explain the reasoning and get your reaction next. Stay with us, we're coming right back.
Right now, we are keeping an eye on the radar for you. The remnants of Sally are moving across the triad, bringing with it a whole lot of rain. You can see where those rain showers are right now on the radar. Heaviest bands to our south in South Carolina. We will get another update from Chief Meteorologist Tim Buckley in just a few minutes. In the meantime, let us know what kind of rain or potential flooding you're seeing where you live, if it's safe. Take a picture or a video and text it to us. You can send that to 336-379-5775. Again, only send us pictures or videos if it's safe to do so.
Now to a big talker online. Two senators want to get rid of daylight saving time. Now, that headline isn't anything new, but their reasoning is. They say with all the craziness about the pandemic, we need some stability, so we should start with ending the time change. Yeah, a lot to unpack here. Digital guru Brian Bennett is keeping eyes on this story online, and he has your reaction this afternoon. Hey, Brian.
Hey, how you doing, Maddie? And yes, it is opinion time. Should we get rid of daylight saving time is the question, and now it's time to get to your answer. So we're going to kick things off with Ruth here. She says, yes, get rid of it, it helps nothing. While Bob says, keep it, need daylight hours after work. I feel that. Jerry says, just keep it the same all year. While Dominique says, no, I like it, what is it hurting? Jenna says, get rid of any time change. Obviously, she wants some consistency there. Amy says, I like it to stay daylight longer so I'm not walking to my car by myself. Okay, that makes sense, in the evening time. Plus, it gives me more time to do yard work when it's not hot. And lastly, Laurie says, I'm all for ending daylight saving time. All right, so obviously, it doesn't really matter to her if it gets dark a little earlier. Maddie, do you have an opinion on this topic?
You know, Brian, this is one of the things that I really do not have an opinion on. Just tell me what time I need to wake up and be at work. But I'm guessing with a newborn daughter, you might have some kind of opinion. Do you think this would throw off her schedule if you had to fall back?
You know what? I didn't even think about that, Maddie. See, now you're getting me, you're going to get me in trouble. But it's so many benefits to daylight savings time, but just for my own selfish reasons, I kind of like it when it gets a little dark earlier, just for the holiday season. It like sets the holiday mood.
Yeah, the Christmas lights.
But I'm going to think about my baby.
The Christmas lights can come on faster if it gets darker outside. I guess that is one benefit to this. We want to hear your opinion, though. We are live on Facebook, YouTube, and Twitter. Use our hashtag 4to5. What should we do with daylight saving time? We'll be right back.
Chief Meteorologist Tim Buckley with you. Still tracking the radar, as we will continue to do for the rest of this evening. It's been raining all day long, but so far, so good. We haven't really seen any flooding issues here locally in the triad. And I want to show you what's been happening across the Carolinas. You can't miss this. Look at this huge band of thunderstorms that has just been torrential. It's all been in South Carolina. This is something that wasn't really expected yesterday. Computer models did not pick up on this. And so this heavy rain down here has actually been preventing a lot of that moisture from moving up into our area. Now, of course, it's still raining. We've already seen one to two inches of rainfall, so there is still a flood threat, a low one, but it's not as high as if some of that heavier rain were to have moved into our area. We'll still be keeping an eye for maybe some minor flooding going into this afternoon and evening. This is all happening as what used to be Sally is now getting sucked up by this cold front that'll get ushered out to sea tomorrow. So we'll continue to have some very steady rain through about 8, 9, 10 o'clock tonight. After that, it gets more sporadic, and by tomorrow, we're mostly done with it. Still a cloudy day, some peaks of sunshine possible for tomorrow afternoon, but going into the weekend, this is when that cool, crisp fall air arrives. Tell you what, high temperatures in the 60s with sunshine on Saturday, that is going to be a shock. We will still have breezy weather. The winds will start to pick up a little bit for tonight and into tomorrow, the breeze will continue, so just kind of expect that. Meantime, the next tropical system, keeping an eye on, this is a major one, Hurricane Teddy. Haven't talked too much about it, but it is a major storm. Winds are at 120 miles per hour right now. This is a category 3 hurricane, and it is headed unfortunately right toward Bermuda. This would be their second hurricane in just as many weeks. For us, it is off the coast. So rip currents if you're headed to the beaches, but otherwise, we're not expecting issues here at home in the triad. Enjoy that fall weather this weekend.
You hear that sound? You know it's time to verify. Is there something bugging you about this time of year? It seems as soon as the cold air arrives in the triad, insects looking to keep warm go inside your home. So WFMY viewer Kristy Henkel sent us this picture of an unwelcome guest showing up on her front porch in Alamance County. She says someone told her it was a queen ant, but she wasn't so sure and asked us to verify. We talked to Frank Fowler, Vice President of McNeely Pest Control and the North Carolina State Extension for Entomology. Now both confirmed, no, the bug Kristy saw isn't a queen ant. It's not even an ant at all.
It was actually a picture of a velvet ant, and it's not an ant at all. It's very interesting, it's a wasp, and this wasp has no wings. They belong to a family called Mutillids, kind of sounds like mutant.
Well, this mutant wasp is intimidating in appearance. The NC State Extension explains it has an ant-like appearance and a furry red and black coat. Even though the male velvet ants have wings, female velvet ants do not. They also have stingers, which can inflict a painful sting. That's why they're nicknamed cow killers, because folklore described the pain or the sting as so painful it could kill a cow. So velvet ants are native to eastern North America, which is why viewer Kristy Henkel found this female velvet ant at her home in Alamance County. Now, the question is, are they dangerous? Well, they might hurt if they sting you, but their main threat is to other wasps and bees. Velvet ants feed on their larvae, thus harming pollination and pest management. Whatever it's called, Maddie, wherever it came from, I don't want it near me. Not now, not ever.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with you. Spot on, Tahisha. I don't do bugs. I'm glad to know what it is, though. If I see one of those, I will know to avoid it. All right, more of the 4 to 5 is coming up after this. We are live on Facebook, YouTube, and Twitter. We will see you there.
Hello, ice cold milk and an Oreo cookie, they forever go together like a classic combination?
They forever go together like a classic combination? Good afternoon and welcome back to your four to five. I'm Maddie Gardner, joined by Tahisha Moise. Of course, we are here to inform you and keep you connected to what's going on from school decisions to this weather. So let's jump right in with Chief Meteorologist Tim Buckley. Tim, the rain, what's going on? What's the latest?
Yeah, for sure. Thanks, Maddie. You know, today, the weather certainly is bad. It's been raining from the morning to the afternoon. But the good news so far, haven't really seen much flooding developing in our area. Have seen a couple of accidents reported, but overall, I think it could be a lot worse. Still an ugly day, no doubt about that, as we look at some of our Weatherstem cameras across the area. There's the look in downtown Greensboro where it really has been raining all day. I'll start you out on the wide view right here. Notice the heaviest rain actually pushing to our south and east. And if you look back towards Charlotte, there are a couple of gaps in the rain developing. Yesterday, I was very concerned. This would be the time we get the heaviest of rainfall, but a new development has allowed us to have more of a optimistic view right now. Still some very steady rain across all of the triad. If you are out and about this afternoon or evening, please be careful. There will be water on the roadways. There could be some flooding in spots. But this huge, heavy band across South Carolina has really robbed a lot of the moisture from moving north. That can happen in weather systems and that was pretty unexpected to me. And that's good news for us. Bad news for South Carolina where a lot of flooding has been happening and also several tornadoes have been happening as well. That severe weather threat, the tornado risk is really out of our area at this point. I'm not worried for us any longer and that's good news, too. Rain totals so far generally one to two inches already in the bucket today. We will continue to have rain heavy at times through about nine to 10 o'clock. But after that, we start to see it tapering off and by tomorrow morning, things are really improving. So still watch for flooding going into this overnight timeframe. But overall, things should be improving quickly going into Friday. And we have some sunshine for you going into that weekend. We'll have a full look at the seven day forecast coming up.
Tim, thank you. That risk of flooding means you'll want to be weather aware today and tonight. Remember, if you see high water, turn around, don't drown. Don't drive through high water. If a road is barricaded off, do not try to drive along it. And be careful about where you park. If you're near a creek or a river, it could get dangerous if flooding starts to happen. You can count on us to keep you updated all night long on the rainfall. Our meteorologists and crews will be keeping a close eye on everything. And remember, you can stay up to date with the latest weather conditions at all times. Check out wfmynews2.com or download the free News 2 app.
Back to another top story this afternoon. Governor Roy Cooper South says elementary schools can move into Plan A and bring students back into the classroom full time. So here's what we know. Kindergarten through fifth grade students can go to Plan A, meaning a full-time return to the classroom without reducing class size after October 5th. They will still have to wear masks, though. State health leaders say it's not right for every district and parents still need remote learning options. We're still waiting on decisions from triad districts about what this will mean. We'll be sure to keep you updated as we learn more. In the meantime, Superintendent Mark Johnson released a statement which says in part, "We all want all schools for all ages open as soon as possible. Pursuing Plan A for all elementary schools and Plan B for all middle schools and high schools is a good step in the right direction." You'll be voting for more than just the presidency come Election Day. There are a number of both state and local races on the ballot. But if you live in Guilford County, at the very end, you will see two questions about a school bond referendum and a sales tax increase. A group of Guilford County business and community leaders are hoping that you'll vote yes to both. They formed a committee that just launched this week called the Vote Smart Campaign. I spoke with a committee co-chair on why your vote matters. It's hard to forget these images. Dented shades, uprooted flooring, lockers falling apart. They give a glimpse of the condition many Guilford County schools are in right now.
It hurts my heart to see that.
Last November, the district released a $2 billion master plan to overhaul the district's aging schools. No school would be left untouched, but the plan needs funding in order to begin.
There was an old phrase that goes, you'll either pay now or pay later. So if we don't have educated students, then they will ultimately become uneducated adults.
Frank Thomas is the co-chair of the Vote Smart Committee. Smart standing for safe, modern, accessible, renovated and tech-ready schools. The committee is pushing for voters to say yes to the $300 million bond referendum and proposed quarter cent sales tax increase on November's ballot.
We want people to invest in our schools because we don't see it just as a bond campaign, but we see it as an investment into our future.
The money would be used to address GCS schools in the worst conditions, acquire land for new buildings, start repairs, implement much-needed technology upgrades and improve school safety. Thomas says the 300 million would be a start towards a brighter tomorrow.
We're going to need everybody in Guilford County, whether you have children in schools or not, to roll up your sleeves and do what's best for our children.
The average GCS school is 54 years old. The district is hoping to bring that number down to 25 should they get the funds they need. Now, if the bond referendum passes, but the sales tax increase fails, it's likely property taxes would have to go up to cover the bond.
Let's turn now to your four to five roundup. The UNC football team will not play this weekend against UNC Charlotte. The 49ers canceled the game because players are quarantining after exposure to the coronavirus. Several members of the Charlotte offensive line were placed into quarantine after the university's COVID-19 contact tracing protocols. Flooding is still a big issue along the Gulf Coast in the wake of Hurricane Sally. In Florida, Governor Ron DeSantis says there have been hundreds of search and rescue missions already. You can see just how high the water is in some parts of the state. The National Guard is now helping out with some of those rescues. More than half a million people are without power in South Alabama and the Florida Panhandle. President Barack Obama's new memoir will be released in two separate books. His publisher announced that the first part of the memoir will come out on Tuesday, November 17th. It's titled A Promise Land and will be more than 700 pages long. The first installment will cover his early life through the first term of his presidency. As for the second part of the book, a release date has not been announced yet. And you have just one more day to vote for the big screen feature that could play at PTI Airport. Airport officials have been teasing a possible drive-in for some time now, but they want you to vote and let them know what they should play. Details about when the drive-in showings are are still limited, but we'll keep you updated. In the meantime, head to PTI's social media pages and cast your movie selection vote.
As a part of the WFMY News 2 voter access team, I'm working to get your voting-related questions answered. And this question comes from Sylvia. She asked, "I heard there will only be paper ballots. I am legally blind and I used a special machine to vote last election. Will this still be available?" The State Board of Elections says the answer is yes. Federal and state law requires voting systems be made available for people with disabilities. Those machines must have features to help make sure disabled voters can cast their ballot privately and independently. A representative with the board says every Election Day precinct and early voting site must have at least one accessible voting machine available for disabled voters. North Carolina law does allow voters who qualify to have help going in and out of voting booths, as well as preparing a ballot from a relative or legal guardian. Anyone with a disability can also ask for help at one-stop early voting sites or Election Day polling places. And to see if you qualify as a disabled voter, you can go to our website, wfmynews2.com. And if you have any voter-related questions, send me an email to spivey@wfmy.com or reach out to me on social media.
Going to the gas pump. It is a weekly, maybe it's a monthly thing now with all the work from home, right? So Maddie, here's my question. Do you pay at the pump or do you go inside?
I pay at the pump, credit card.
Okay, you, I mean, it's one of the most convenient things ever. Most of us don't go inside unless we're buying like a drink or a snack or something like that. But if you pay at the pump only, you might get some sticker shock. Sarah writes this to Two Wants To Know. "My daughter pumped $10 worth of gas on her debit card. A hold of $100 was put on her card. She has less than that in her account. Now she's getting overdraft fees and it has lasted several days." Well, we asked an expert about why gas stations put a hold on your card.
Merchants, they're the ones who set the amounts of the hold itself. And usually what it is, is it's a security measure in instances where the amount that's going to be paid isn't known at the point of sale right away. So if you go up to a pump at a gas station, they don't know if you're going to be getting $5, $10 or, you know, filling up the tank in a big truck.
Well, the merchants are the one again that set the amount of the hold fee. Is there a standard? Is there a way for you to get around the hold fee? We find these solutions for you tonight at 6 o'clock. And Two Wants To Know, is bringing in experts to help you? Whether you have unemployment benefit questions or you are now looking for a job and are wondering what's out there, you can text your questions to 336-379-5775. Again, text only. Don't call. Our experts are from Wake Forest Law and NC Works. They'll be here starting at 5:30.
Coming up, Christmas is now less than 100 days away. Isn't 2020 flying? So the question is, have you started your Christmas shopping already or has your shopping plans changed because of the pandemic? Let us know. Use that hashtag four to five and we'll be right back. Reopening Underface 2.5 has some Greensboro dance teachers, well, quite literally dancing for joy. After shutting down for six months, closing for good was on the table. When Governor Roy Cooper announced that fitness centers and dance studios could reopen, they celebrated with a now viral moment. Photojournalist Manning Franks talked about the dance studio, about how dance classes are now back on.
It's been six months and finally, once everything got lifted, we were so excited to get back in the studio. And some of us instructors were just kind of joking around, talking and we're like, we should do a video and, you know, put it out there. And somebody just started singing the Eminem song where the beginning of it, "Guess Who's Back, 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 Back Again." And it's just kind of blown up. And I think it's just something that's needed right now. Everything is so serious and everybody is, you know, going through so much and it's just fun and happy and makes you laugh and just kind of sums all of us up. If we wouldn't have been able to open this month, we probably would have had to close down, which would have been devastating. You know, this is, I started this business when I was 19, really before they announced the opening, the 2.5. I was looking at shutting down for this month, like starting our shutdown. And when they made that announcement, I lost my mind. Excited doesn't even explain it.
All right, Christmas will be here before you know it. There are now less than 100 days between now and the holiday. So we wanted to know, how is the pandemic changing up your holiday shopping? If it is as, at all, right? Are you getting a head start? Are you holding off until at least Thanksgiving? Let's see what you had to say on Facebook today. Michelle says, "Buying early," and she puts in parentheses, "she's done and giving money more than items to certain age groups." Well, congratulations to you, Michelle, for being done so early. Princess says, "I have two teenage daughters. There will be less around our Christmas tree because of the pandemic, but they will get three to four really nice gifts." Kara says, "I have always been an early shopper, but this year, shopping will have to be scant. This pandemic has not done the massage therapy industry any favors." Thinking that's where she works. Galen Spooner says, "I have a few Christmas gifts bought already. I plan to try and get my shopping done early this year. I am not an online shopper." And Rosemary says, "I'm a continuous shopper. If I see something at a good price that I think someone would like, I buy it and wait for the appropriate birthday or Christmas. That said, I am way behind this year due to staying home." Now, the problem for me, Maddie, is when I buy things ahead of time, I forget where I put them and then I find it months later down the line and I'm like, oh, that's where I put that, that I wanted to give to so-and-so. So I try to just kind of keep it around the holidays. I haven't started mine this year, but I may, may change it up this year.
Well, when you read Rosemary's comment there, I thought, goodness, she has a lot of self-control. Those gifts just burn a hole in my pocket and I just have to give it to the person I bought it for. You know, I haven't thought about Christmas shopping. I've thought a lot about Christmas. If you watch the show at all this week, I've been talking about Christmas nonstop. And I apologize for those of you who say I'm not respecting the other holidays. However, I'm just excited to spend time with family and I hope that that can happen this holiday season. You know, I've missed out on a lot of good family quality time because of the pandemic. So I think that will be the gift, not to be too sappy or sentimental.
Well, I mean, how can you not be sappy when you have like the most beautiful nieces just waiting to be hugged and kissed and loved, right? I saw you posted a photo of them on Instagram the other day. So I know, they really are.
Posted one today, too.
That you all get to be reunited.
Thank you, Tahisha.
I saw that one.
More of the four to five is coming up right after this. Stick around. Hi there. I think our gift should be for the coronavirus to go away. I think our gift should be for the coronavirus to go away.